Let's call in my gentleman, Councilman Ginn. Want to ask Deanna to lead us into the press. You all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do county business first before we move on to the food beverage tax. So if you can't hear me, we're just gonna get some things done real quick. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, thank you. Okay, in the view of the October minutes, if I had a chance for you, I think you entertain a motion to approve. Bill, next motion to approve. All in seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, we had a glitch on Gateway on the county budget. So what we need, we need a motion to rescind what we made a motion on last month. And then we'll need a motion to readopt.
Nothing changed, though.
Nothing changed, it's all the same. I'll go with two numbers. That's all right.
So I'll make a motion to re-resent.
Anyways. Ashley second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now the motion to adopt county budgets.
I'll make the motion to adopt it on the county budget.
Ashley makes motion, all in seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm on our side on that. I think everybody got the ledger power emailed to the tax abatement. If I have any questions on that, I believe pretty much it brings it just formally to ensure it's signed and really taken care of. I'd like to know it's a ten-year, 100% abatement. And they will be paying a EDA, economic payment, starting after it's billed. Correct?
Yeah, everyone has to do. Sorry, what's billed later, they probably have them around. Right now, the hope is that it starts sometime in late 2024 or 2025. It would be done about a year later.
Sure, we've made the motion in its contingency clause, the EDA because the EDA is uncaned.
That would be appropriate.
It'll be ninety days after it's billed.
Waited or?
The first payment would actually be made before the first tax payment would be made. So the county's actually getting their money faster.
Been a long going out affair.
Always are.
Okay, I appreciate your patience with us and everything else, Brian. Appreciate your input. I'll make a motion to approve that payment. With contingency of a development.
Yes.
Contract. Can you make a motion to approve? Billie seconds it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate everything you've done.
What's the residue fee number?
He said 2023, I think dash point nine.
Pardon?
Dash, uh.
So 2023, 2029. I got to sign that one. Okay, do I sign this back with Deanna?
Yes.
Shall we, so don't mess it up.
Is this on real estate and personal or just real estate?
Personal property.
Personal property.
Personal property.
Personal property.
Just what personal property is.
Right here.
It's all, yes, it'll get reported at that one.
Okay, Donnie Robbins on her recorded perpetuation fund. This is the same thing we did last year. Nothing any different. Everybody understand that. She says it hasn't done the other way. So they can work the counter too.
Oh, she's got money in there.
Yeah, she's got money in there. No problem. I made a motion to approve Dottie's perpetuation fund for part-time recorder. So they can work the counter and other things.
I'll make that motion.
Deanna makes that motion.
I'll second it.
Ashley seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or by side of Deanna? Want to explain what you're?
Okay, just real quick, I'll be out of the country for December meetings, so that's why I'm coming to you today. I'm just asking for a one-time bonus of $2,500 for each of my six full-time deputies. This year, the girls really stepped up and worked hard during not only the transition of a new clerk, but also being a deputy short, which means we did a lot of moving job duties around, on top of adding extra jobs onto each duty, each deputy, and a lot of job cross-training. Unfortunately, my current part-time girl isn't able to work hours I really needed her to this year. And so we are currently looking to hire a part-time person in January, but that does mean that I have enough money in my part-time funds to pay this bonus out of and that I'm not asking for any money. So just in closing, they have taken on a lot of additional responsibilities, learned to work as a team, and I want them to know that they have exceeded my expectations this year and I feel they really deserve this. So I'm just asking for your permission to pay this from my budget. I've got a part-time, the part-time budget I have.
And there's no intention of getting that money from them?
Before the end of the year now, I have enough left to pay for the part-time girl.
Currently, you having part-time?
That's one. And she enrolled in nursing school, and she has little girls, been sick a lot. So unfortunately, she hasn't been able to work as much as we planned, but we hired her. But we do have her current job, she'll open her part-time for next year, especially with election year next year, so we'll definitely be doing that more.
How much money do you have left in your part-time?
So they'd be in front of two different funds, and there's a little over $12,001 and about $6,000.
Are they working more hours or just working harder per hour? Or neither?
Well, right now, working less hours. Still working hard. We've been canning a lot of files and we've been able to keep a list of those in the attract that have been into the state to be destroyed to try to make more room in state.
And this is the first year you've spent the whole year without that other employee corrupting?
Yes, this is the first year, and I did not ask for one during my budget to replace that one either. So we're still trying to, you guys, to help.
Any others have any questions? So you have how much money?
I have a little over $12,001 and then you have a little over $6,000 on the other.
So that's eighteen.
So it would be $15,000 that would be total for the bonus.
So you'd have about thirty.
So is this gonna go back to now all the other offices are gonna come in and they got money left, wanna give bonuses to their employees?
You have that happen last year. Yeah, they were about to stop last year.
I guess I could see if they was working extra hours, we could maybe allow something for hours, but I can't just, me to say you're working less hours now.
No, the part-time girl was working less hours. We didn't have a part-time.
Full-time worked the same number hours.
Correct, they're just doing a lot more duties now.
Because you really don't have a part-time other than one person that's there.
Correct.
Really, really.
Well, the next year, we'll have a whole study that just wants to revamp all of the compensation, so.
Yes, yes, and we've already turned ours over.
This opens up a can of worms every year. It just does for me. And like I said, I'm just sending it around, just supposed to leave the meeting. I give my opinion, but it just opens up a can of worms against everybody in here.
So they've already got a rate for next year, is that correct? How much was that?
Two percent.
Plus.
Do you have any questions?
Most of my girls, like I was in Texas, she's gonna lose these two.
So you have the money budgeted already for part-time?
Correct. And our office does not make as much already as some of the other offices.
Well, I'm not, we're not gonna discuss that. The question I had, the statement I'm gonna make is, so we budgeted for part-time. So if you were to have a part-time girl, we would've paid it anyway.
Correct.
But we didn't have a part-time girl, so your girl, so we stepped up and what we can do. So I guess it's, I catch whatever is in the wash. All the money's in there to be used for that. They understand just the anti-bulge is something maybe.
Exactly.
I mean, I wouldn't want to see in the next year.
Now, I plan to use that for next year.
Twenty thousand dollars still laying in that account and using it. That's case for you to start putting in just in that money, but if you're gonna use it for part-time next year, then it's already in the budget for next year.
But it's a seven percent bonus without actual metrics on the individual on how much more they did. It's just a blanket for everybody.
I think it's a little much.
Deanna, I'm very fine.
You know, the money's been budgeted. You always ask the department heads to live up to your budget. And, you know, we really can't micro-manage how to do it until I have something that's out of whack. It's really not. It's in the budget, money's there. We would've paid it anyway if the part-time was working, so we'll see how.
We approved your budget, so it's already.
Have that money in there.
And they did step up and replace the two without one person and not ask to replace them again.
But if anybody else has extra money in their budget, are we just gonna prove those two? Just happened to wind down like they did for the budget season.
That was because of COVID.
I know they did last year in the prosecutor's office.
You know, I don't have a problem with almost all the budgeting, the money's already been spent.
I'd budget it for salaries.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion after we approve it.
I'll second it.
Can you make a motion to approve it? Deanna, second it. Can you make the motion to approve, Deanna seconds it? You want to tie or hand it up?
Me? I'm just ready. Now you're ready to vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
May.
Oh, again, three and three on the votes. On the top right now. I can't do it, I have to vote no. I really do. I'm sorry. It opens up...
I don't think opening a can of worms every time you say that every year. I don't think that's a fair statement.
It just does. It does, maybe I did. We end up with one and we end up with all of them. I'm sorry.
But I feel like our offices get forgotten a lot. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, let's do transfers real quick. Everybody seen a copy of the transfers? Everybody seen any question up here? Uh, most of us got it.
Make a motion to approve the transfers.
Make a motion to approve the transfers.
Second.
Not only seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Move on to the additionals. Everybody got a copy of those? You want to do them one at a time or you want to do them all? Probably do them one at a time.
Yeah, do them all at a time.
Okay. I got the $10,000 for the shelter. Just a grant, correct?
Two different ones.
Pardon?
It was two different ones.
Yeah, we did one at a time, okay?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Everybody got that Shelter Pet Dad Alliance grant for $10,000. And going to use it for House Pharmacy and Social Security. Anybody have any questions on that one?
I'll move it through, but...
I'm twice as good. You said we're starting up a trap, we're trapping animals now?
That's what it's supposed to be for.
What is it?
It's supposed to be...
TNR.
TNR, trap, meter, release. That's five of it, and then five of it was supposed to be for, to finish stopping.
Just looks a little awkward right there.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
I knew we had plenty of animals out there. I was just trying to drop trapping animals. I'm good. I'll second that motion.
Kenny makes a motion, Kenny seconds, any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, we got another one for $2,000. Best friend's network, right? Go towards supplies for spaying and neutering animals. I'm trying to listen, right?
That could go towards spaying, yeah. So it could all work together. That was forbidden adoption event.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Bill seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Boy can deliver, $2,851. That just does come from commissary share?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did the transfer open? Everybody get that?
Yeah.
Entertaining a motion to approve $2,851.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Ashley made the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Deanna seconds it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? This is $14,000 appropriating funds from the sale of a 2017 Chevy Tahoe. And you want to use that towards another? Correct?
Correct, yeah.
They're keeping by the Tahos. Pardon?
We're on track.
Everybody get that one? Entertaining a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Deanna makes the motion to approve the $14,000. One second.
I'll second.
Not only seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Here's a good one. $1,200 from selling a 2010 Dodge Charger. Wants to do the same thing with it. Have to preserve for another year. Any questions? I'll make the motion to approve. Kenny makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Bill seconds. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. I saw the fairgrounds to cover expenses for 2022. Funds originally not appropriated. Bills are all paid. Money was in there for the fairgrounds. It was $62,883.07. We just need to clean up the budget, right, Deanna?
Correct.
Need to clean up the budget, everything's taken care of.
The money's in there already, right?
Money's been there, it's already paid, everything's out. We did make the budget for '22 for the fairgrounds. Just cleaning that, what we done there. Anybody sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Entertaining a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Ashley makes the motion to approve. This last one to you, boy, just take a second.
I'll second.
Deanna seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Additionals, transfers. Once we pass that back down, we'll start on the reason everybody's here. Can you hear me, left in my...
No, no.
Huh? No. Do you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, what I'm going to do is ask for a discussion from the council. And if anyone has any comments, we'll take your comments. And we'll, but we want to try to hold them to three minutes. Again, please, so we're not here... Kristy's going to keep time, apparently comments, yeah? She should be setting her own gap, but I want to go down, I want the council to... I want to hear their input on the food beverage tax.
Starting with me? Starting right down, everybody. Need you? Um, based on the comments that we had in the last meeting, um, I don't understand that.
Okay.
Everybody hear me now?
No.
Okay. Got some half-cold, so I'm going to... I'm going to sound very loud, I'm sorry. Um, based on the discussions that were here, the public hearing, which I appreciate all of you that were here, voiced your opinions about it, and talking to a lot of people in my district, very intentional about finding out how people felt about it. Um, and the consensus I got was that people felt, you know, not a part-time, they're going to tax anyway, but to do the tax like that on something that's only open seventy-five days a year was probably the topic every time I had a conversation with somebody, that's what was said. Um, understandable. Um, so, my feeling about it is I, I'll vote the way my constituents want me to vote. They put me here to be their voice. And, and everybody says we need a pool. There wasn't really anything about that, that we, they wanted us to have a pool, but they didn't want us to have a $10 million pool. They would want us to have a pool that we could pay for. And I think there's a way we can do that without doing the food beverage tax. Um, now, the food and beverage tax isn't a bad thing. Not going to sure about that. I mean, it is, I think it's bad timing right now with the way the economy is. Um, it will do a little bit injustice to our small business owners. I've been a small business owner for many, many years and I've passed the debt the way it is like everybody else does. But, you know, with having the fairgrounds in the food and beverage tax, I think that there's a possibility that we might need to take a look at it based on what we're going to do at the fairgrounds. We don't know yet, but that's way down the road. That's something that we could put money into that, with people here year-round. It's not something that we're only going to use in the summertime and it's going to be closed, which I think is a better use of the money if we have to do it. Um, I would love more than nothing else to have our fairgrounds be available to all different kinds of organizations that come year-round. I think that's what's there. So, my consensus on the whole deal is I think right now we need to table it, without a doubt. Uh, we got, uh, FBQs coming in on the reprose project. We haven't seen none of that yet enough. That's really going to sway my decision because I think it's not, it's just not good timing and my decision's still won. Um, I think that we can, we can get a pool. I think there is a way to do it. Um, but I think we can kind of put the cart before the horses a little bit. So, I mean, my, my goal would be to table it at this meeting and see what the FBQs coming in at and what the project's going to look like and see what kind of money is going to... We have $3 million laying on the table right now. Um, I think we could put some additional money with that without borrowing any money and see what we can do with that. So, that's my focus on the table, on what we're going to do, what I feel we ought to do.
Okay. Uh, my position hasn't changed from the start on this. Uh, I think it's a really bad time to be putting another tax on the taxpayers in Kier County. Uh, I, and I think it's gone about all wrong. I don't think the options were looked into early on what other things could be done as far as, you know, first options always do nothing. Second option is maybe renovate what you have. Third, fourth, fifth options could be several different things. And I don't think these were really looked into. Uh, I'm not against the pool. Uh, I'm not against improvements at the fairgrounds, but if we was going to do a ta, a tax, it needs to be re-rolled. It could benefit the people who are paying the tax. The business owners need to get something out of this, not just be the ones that have to pay their bookkeeper an extra $600 a year and collect the tax and do all the extra work. So, I guess my position right now is I would vote the tax down and take a whole new look at this pool project. And like Kenny said, there's other ways to finance this. And at worst, I would table it for me, so that's where I stand.
Well, so far, we all agree that it probably should be tabled. Um, I probably have a different angle on that, but I would say that tabling is a good idea because we do have some information, um, that we're still waiting on. And, um, we tried to come at this from a perspective of having options, and we do have options, but it's been a while since we've gotten those and we want to see what those RFQs, what the information is that we can obtain and to see what's best for our community. I've heard a lot of random numbers thrown out there and I'm one of quite a few folks that went around and looked at all of the other projects, um, around the state and understand what goes into those projects and what those projects cost. It wasn't a random number, um, but once we take a look at these RFQs and we see the actual dollars, then we can make a better decision.
I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of with Kenny in tableing it, so it comes out. So it gets project numbers that, that's coming in. The only thing I've got a problem with is putting hardship on the restaurants that's collecting it. I mean, if it's going to cost them money to collect it, to give to us, I have a problem with that all the way around. I don't want to see, I know Cindy back here, she told me what it's going to cost her. You know, and it's not astronomical amount of year, but she's having to pay to collect money for us. I don't like that. So that's, that's just my opinion. On the other side, Bill?
Can you hear me? I'm also... I'm also wanting to table this thing. I, I see, I know why the court, the park got me front of the horse. I understand all the funds that were out there that we had to get in a hurry and get that all taken care of, but, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of fixing the pool or doing something with the pool. But, right now, I, all the people that I appear and talk to are all against this food and beverage tax, so I just think it needs to be tabled right now until we have more information on prices of pool and what have you.
I got it big enough now. But I agree with Deanna, we should table it until we get all the numbers in. But I will say, unless it is zero entry, I will not vote for anything because it's got to be able to help people with disabilities.
All right. Can you hear me now? Okay. Um, I agree that it needs to be tabled. I've heard mixed reviews on both the tax and the project, but I think the common thread amongst everybody I've talked to is we just don't have enough information yet, so I'm not ready to vote on anything at this point.
Kenny?
Go ahead.
Yeah, the reason, when a, when a motion gets tabled, I'm not exactly sure what all goes through that, but I would like to go back to the court and see, or if it's going to be talked about, be rewritten, so the funds will not be limited to just the pool and the fairgrounds, but they could be used for other things if we was to go down that road. But I'm not the favorite of food beverage taxes at this time, and I guess I need to know more about what happens if it gets tabled.
Well, I guess if it's getting tabled and it gets brought up in another meeting down the road after we have the information, Ernie? That's my, that's my...
But it has to get a majority vote to be untabled, correct? Can't just bring it up, I don't think. Once a motion's tabled, it's done, unless a majority vote breaks back up. Sure?
I'll make it just tabled. I think I'll...
I think we need to check.
You're right, Ernie, that's part of the territory procedure.
Is that, yeah, and that's the way it works. I think you can't untable it unless you have a majority vote of the council. Well, yeah, it can be there, but unless you get a majority vote, it can't be untabled. Usually, tax or bills go to die. Well, it's something we need to check out and make sure of.
Well, I do know that the way the legislation is written, because I read it, it can only be used for the pool or the fairgrounds. According to the leg, the way the legislature written are...
I understand that, but that's where I think it needs to be rewrote and the council needs to have its foot on it.
Okay, anybody got any comments? Be glad to listen to comment. I'm trying to hold it to three minutes. You got her, Kristy?
Got it.
I'm just wondering what we're getting hold on. Last one, the last meeting we had, Hannah.
We can't hear her campaign.
Okay. Um, I'm just wanting... I'm just wondering what the quote is going to be on, because last meeting we got the handout about the other pools, but we didn't get a rendition of what we're looking at, for sure. So, I'm just wondering what we're getting quotes, are we getting on local things or...
Brian, you own a, I mean, your name's on the, I'm not quoting you in the best, but your name's on the advertisement, so.
We have RFQs out that are due in for renovation of the pool, and what our key is essentially is a request for qualifications. We're doing it by the build operate transfer process, so we will give a builder and designer such, pack it, and as far as what we're getting quotes on, because our original approach of going to the council for a budget, have a state of budget, we're going to be able to, and have to put together a project or scope and add to license pools, zero entry being a key aspect in the city of the pool, that is not under current code now, it will be a big part of that, and it will be a little bit of a pull from this conversation.
So, how much money is involved in getting the quotes?
Getting quotes, zero money so far. Well, that's not true because parts of the door are being, parts are being paid for, the make a building parts and sort of that help this process forward, so there's a little investment there, but just to talk deeper to the regard of futures, zero money in that.
Come on, sir.
I'm just wondering, you know, so are you saying that, are there multiple quotes coming in for renovating the existing pool?
For renovating?
Yeah. For renovating the existing pool, are there quotes coming in for that?
That's part of the RFQ, we'll probably sit down with that company and talk about, hey, what, you know, what we want to do with that. If you're talking renovated, then, I mean, the problem is with the pool...
Fixing the existing pool area, John.
And bring it up to code?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be part of the conversations as far as what can be done, obviously with a pool, if you're going to, if you're going to make a zero entry, you're going to be doing serious amounts of demolitions such too, and if you're going to do that, there's an argument, especially when you have, you know, shall we say guts from nineteen fifties and sixties, might as well replace that while you're digging the whole thing, and pretty soon you get to a point, and what the designers have told us in the past is, once you get that, it's not renovation and a new pool are kind of, you know, kind of the same thing on, does that make sense?
Yeah, and just in the last meeting, it sounded like there was nothing for renovating the existing pool, and...
Yeah, and part of that is because of the biases and the context design said, by the time we fix things, shall we say, it almost becomes a new pool.
I guess that's what I was just meaning.
I think one of the things that needs to be clarified here is RFQ is not a quote, it qualifies a contractor or a company to build, rent, or renovate our pool. That's what we're going to get, is companies that are qualified to do that, and then once that, those come in, then we'll sit down, or not us, all the, we're ours money people, but like the committee and the parks board, whoever's going to be actually, and the commissioners, say, okay, this is what we want to do, let's see a design, what we can spend, how much money it's going to cost, all that's got to come. An RFQ is basically just a qualifier to be able to even pursue that project. That's why I said we put the cart before the horse, because we don't have...
And I agree.
So, that's what, so don't miscommunicate, and we're not expecting to get a quote for a new pool from this month away, and that's not what an RFQ is.
Okay, it's like a start of the process.
Yeah, RFP is a proposal. We haven't got to that stage, because we don't have, we don't know what to do.
Because of comments I was hearing, different people outside here, you know, just listening to was that the existing pool's way too much to redo that, so we're not even going to look at that. And that just didn't make sense, it might be, but let's get somebody to actually take a good look at it to make sure, you know, rather than just write it off and say, no, and we're going to go with another one. The second question I had was for the new projects and stuff was, how many quotes are we looking at getting for that and stuff?
I think we're going to get three, I think.
For the RFQ, for the, for...
For what they're wanting from the project.
For the VOT process, we have to get at least three.
At least three.
We have, again, they have to track it, I know we have three that have contacted us, and we probably will get some more, so we'd be satisfied.
Okay. That makes me feel better.
And even with those, you still necessarily have to go for one of those three, you don't like any of them, you go for somebody...
I understand that.
Why, who should be seeing?
At least you're looking at it, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Any help? Cameron on that?
Basically, I'm here to voice some opinions that came to me through emails. These people either could not attend the meeting or did not feel comfortable speaking in front of a public hearing, so if you'll let me have the time, I have three emails and then someone else has three, because I received six altogether. I did tell these people that I would make their voices heard to you, and, you know, we just go from there. So, the first one is, to whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in support of the new Aquatics Center here in Greensburg. As a teacher, a mother, a friend, a many with littles, I feel the new Aquatics Center would benefit our community greatly. As a teacher, I see a lot of low-income families using the pool in the summers. These children do not have a lot of other opportunities to do things outside of our community. As a mother, I would like to have more options and things for my children to do within our community and not adding things like the new Aquatics Center does not allow for our community to grow, and without growth, we will not be putting money back into our community for other things to flourish. As a friend, I see a lot of my friends taking their children an hour or more away from Greensburg to visit other aquatic centers when they could be doing that right here at home. I also feel that other businesses could benefit from the pool in the fact that some parents would be taking their children to eat before or after visiting the pool. It will bring in other visitors from surrounding areas who will also be needing a place to stop for food or beverage on their way in or out of town. I feel that this can only benefit our community and not hinder it. I have lived in Greensburg my entire life, feel that something like this Aquatics Center would be a great asset for our community when I was growing up, and so I know it will be even more so today. These kids need opportunities to get outside, and this would definitely be one of those. Thank you for your time, signed by Whitney Bradywater. Second one, my name is Stacy Reisman, I believe the plans for the new Aquatics Center would benefit Decatur County, and I support the food and beverage tax. As the current camp director of Camp Rainbow, a summer camp for children with special needs here in Decatur County, an aquatic center in our community would provide so many opportunities for our special needs population. The children at camp love to go to the pool, and it was a big disappointment to them not to have a pool to go to this past summer. An aquatic center would offer exercise, play, and inclusion opportunities to the campers. A zero-entry pool would allow special needs children a safe and easy entrance and exit to the pool. They would be able to ease their way into the pool without having to confront the deep water areas right away. It would allow for children in wheelchairs to access the pool. The shallow water would allow them to sit, be mobile, have some independence, and be a part of the group. The play features would allow for the inclusion of all children to play together. Many aquatic centers of this size offer sensory swing time. Water time provides many benefits to special needs childrens and adults. An aquatic center of this caliber would be such a benefit to our community. As a parent, I took my children to Shelbyville, to the Meridian Park Family Aquatic Center to enjoy the pool there. This pool supported a family of all ages, the zero-entry pool and water activities were so much more feasible to a parent with small children. I continued to attend Shelbyville Pool as my children got older, it had more to offer, various slides, diving boards, and plenty of deck space with umbrellas. This aquatic center provided a wonderful family experience in the summer. As a middle school teacher, a pool like this would give children of all ages something to do in the summer, it would be a great place for families to go and spend time together while right here in our community. Sincerely, Stacy Reisman. And my third one says, I find, I feel very strongly that Greensburg needs a community pool. Last summer, my children and I had to travel to Columbus, Batesville, and Shelbyville when they wanted a pool day. Going to the pool is a cheap way for families to have a fun time during the summer. Many families in our community cannot afford to go on vacation and look forward to using the city pool every summer. I know several other local groups use the city pool every summer. Camp Rainbow did not get to use the city pool this summer, the Greensburg Public Library had to use the Batesville City Pool for their end-of-summer celebration. My children also did not get to take their swim lessons this year. Communities, Greensburg size and smaller, are able to figure out how to fund and keep a pool up and running. I feel it is important for our community to have this amenity. Thank you, Erica Kramer. Again, those who were emailed to me because they did not feel comfortable speaking in public, setting for, for an eligible to in the last meeting or two minutes, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, Cameron on that? Go ahead.
I didn't word that thing, it become, personal clear is, there's not enough information presented about the board, or what we do, what it's going to cost, so we really kind of shoot them in the dark on that. A lot of questions, again, I think about how much it would cost businesses, how much money it would, the tax would generate, I don't think we're at a point we can make decisions yet. I'd recommend you have further discussion for three to four months, allowing those who are working on will come back with a real plan on how they're going to implement, how they're going to bill, whatever, potentially cost, so you have more to evaluate before making a decision. Because everybody wants a pool, but we're not sure what we're going to pay for. If there's more money to buy, to build besides the tax, let's identify that source. So, when we make a decision, we know where we're going and what we're going to do. But delaying, you have time to gather all the information you need and do a study on the need for a pool and how we would pay for it.
Thank you, Bill. Kay, yes, Ben?
Hi, I'm Kay Obermeyer, and I have some letters to read and a couple of my own comments as well. Dear county council members, I am writing to express my strong support for the establishment of an aquatic center in our community. As a resident of Decatur County, I believe that such a facility would bring numerous benefits to our city and its residents. First and foremost, a public pool would contribute significantly to the health and well-being of our community. Swimming is a low-impact exercise that promotes cardiovascular fitness, muscle strength, and overall flexibility. It provides an excellent way for people young and seasoned, which is crucial in combating the rising rates of sedentary lifestyles and related health issues. In addition to its health benefits, a public pool would foster a sense of community and social interaction. It would be a gathering place for families, friends, and individuals of all backgrounds to come together and enjoy recreational activities. This sense of community engagement is vital for building strong, resilient neighborhoods and enhancing the overall quality of life in our city. Equally importantly, a public pool would serve as a valuable resource for water safety education. Drowning is the leading cause of accidental death, especially among children. By providing a readily accessible and supervised swimming facility, we can enhance water safety awareness and offer swimming lessons to residents, reducing the risk of water-related accidents. In years past, the swim clinics have been a positive experience for my youngest daughter, and my oldest daughter has thoroughly enjoyed working in the summer as a lifeguard. Moreover, a public pool would be a source of revenue for the city, entrance fees, swimming lessons, and other related programs to generate income that would be reinvested into maintaining and improving our recreational facilities. This in turn would contribute to the economic development and attractiveness of our city. I understand that there may be budgetary considerations and logistical challenges associated with establishing a public pool. However, I believe that a long-term benefits to the health, safety, and sense of community in our city makes it a worthwhile investment. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to the continued growth and enhancement of our wonderful community. Sincerely, Ashley Zachary. The second one, dear community council members, county council members, I really think that a new aquatic center would be an excellent addition to our community and would be helpful in growing our community. I have three young daughters, and we haven't been able to enjoy the local pool because it wasn't very kid-friendly. Every summer, we have had to travel to Shelbyville and even Oxford, Ohio, to enjoy a nice aquatic center. On summer days that we do this, we always eat out, and feel that people from nearby towns like Batesville, Rushville, and Westport would frequent an aquatic center here because they don't have one that would bring in more money to places than just an aquatic center. Please consider helping our community grow and making it more fun for our children. Thank you, Tara Coy. And the third one, I fully support the Aquatics Center Committee in the building of a dynamic pool facility in an area occupied by the closed and unsafe Allen Memorial Pool. Right now, we just have a big hole in the ground. I would much rather drive by and see families enjoying a pool facility for all ages and abilities. I have heard a lot of talk over the eleven years since I've been back to Greensburg about creating an environment that will bring families to our communities. This is supposed to include families moving here as well as bringing visitors to Greensburg, Decatur County. I firmly believe that the plan presented by the committee will achieve both goals. In doing this, it is critical that all construction be completed to meet current codes and accessibility standards, even though it might cost a little more. We need a family-friendly facility. It seems ludicrous that consideration of doing anything less is even an option. Why build a facility that would need improvements as soon as it opens? Let's do this thing right, the right way the first time, so that we have a state-of-the-art facility that provides for the current and future residents as well as drawing in visitors. Even as someone who doesn't have children, I see the impact the facility will present to our community. And as a little background, I am a retired and one-hundred percent service-connected, disabled Army Command Sergeant Major and moved back to the area, hoping that the area was even more family-friendly. There has been progress, but the job is not done. The new pool would be proof that we are in tune with the needs of our residents. As far as the food and beverage tax is concerned, a fifty-dollar restaurant bill would only add fifty cents to the total. That seems like a reasonable amount. It's time to stop worrying about hearing some grumbling or worrying about the next election. Be the leaders we expected you to be when you were voted into office, Tom Fleming. And I would just like to say, as a person who has my own pool, I feel the need for a community pool is very great. Swimming is an important life skill. I have taken my children to other areas when they were little for the family-friendly pool, and I know that the committee has been working hard to find ways to fund something that would be a comprehensive pool plan, they've given money that has, to be earmarked for an outside adventure in the community to make quality of life and improvement, looking for ways to fund it that not only Decatur County residents, but residents from other communities would be paying almost half, as according to the, I don't know, the way the IA tracks us, it's kind of scary, but they do, with those numbers, and I think it's a very equitable way to help support something in Decatur County that is greatly needed. I'm so impressed with the new, oh, help me with the word, park, the inclusion park, it's beautiful, I've taken my grandkids multiple times, and I think that we need to make sure that we do equally as well in any project that this, that the community takes on. I agree that tabling, and it's kind of a circle thing, you know, we have to go to the food and beverage tax pretty quickly because they don't vote again for two years, we've got the solar eclipse coming up where there will be thousands of people from out of the county here, and a good time to get some money from them if we can get this in place before that event happens this spring. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to say a thing? Yes, sir?
My name's Manat, and I was wondering if anyone is going to approve some kind of a real estate developer like I suggested in the last meeting, you know, share the cost with the county, county can lease the ground, maybe. Everything would be up to code if a real estate developer did it. County get out of a lot of the expenses. County get out of a lot of expense, something to look into, you know, alternative measures for income rather than this 1%. My family is in the recreation business. Hear all the time, older people, even younger people, fixed income. 1% sounds pretty trivial, but when you hear people going on about fixed income and all of that, it all adds up. After the last meeting also, talked with a couple of gentlemen, everybody tends to forget that the YMCA is right up there in a nice spot. They have a pool. I've not been in there, but I don't know what kind of a facility it is, but what would be wrong with approaching them, taking the grant money, seeing if they can upgrade, make this water park or whatever, and partner up with the YMCA? Those numbers that I looked on that sheet last, last meeting, it would be pretty, pretty much cheaper for a family to buy a membership at the YMCA. They'd have access to that whole facility up there. That's something to think of too, rather than building this really elaborate pool. I don't think anybody's really against building a pool up here, but it's got to be affordable. This, this giant water park, you know, it's going to eat a lot of hay, and, you know, put the beverage tax and food tax on it, that's not the way to pay for it. It's got to be self-sustaining, you know? That's pretty much everybody's opinion that I've talked to. So anyway, I appreciate your time, listening.
Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got something to say. How long has the old pool been closed? One year, two years?
One year.
One year.
Why was it closed?
Because when I approached the county council and the commissioners, whatever, either of their meetings, it was the consensus of them at that time that they no longer wanted to invest good money after bad because one thing has led to another in the multiple repairs that have been done for the pool at that time. It was in need of a liner for, to start with, not a typical price of a liner you might think of a pool. But it would have to have passed all comprehensive testing. The concrete underneath the liner is deteriorated to the point that it would have to be reinforced before they would even consider putting a new liner in the pool. And that was the decision that was made when I approached the commissioners. They voted at that time to elect, not to open in 2023 until at such a time that we pursued an option on how they wanted to pursue.
A lot of it sounds like preventative maintenance should be done. A bit of maintenance gets done every month, you see problems, you go to fix it, try to fix it. Apparently, nothing was done to that, to get it done. Whether it's the council's fault, I don't know. It's just the main thing isn't a quality issue.
You knew the pool was 60 years old, right?
Yeah, I know it was.
Okay.
Again, preventative, there's a lot, a lot of good.
There were a lot of preventative maintenance steps that have been taken on that pool throughout the years. It's, it's not something that was totally neglected. The life of the liner is only warranted for 10 years. That liner is 15 years old. We already stretched it as far as we could. In 2022, there was a very good chance we weren't going to open in '22 because we brought in a leak detection service, they did scuba diving, they found multiple holes, we drained the pool down, we repaired the holes, thought we had things to where we could probably get another season out of it, build the pool backup. Got within three to four feet from the top of the pool and the entire three sides of the deep end, the liner fell into the pool. So we brought in a roofing company with a heat welder. We put 12-foot patches on it. We, he, there was no guarantee. He said he would not warranty the patches, but by the grace of God, we made it through '22 and offered another season. With a hose running 24/7 because we were also leaking water underground that was coming outside of our block wall, so we knew we had another leak somewhere else. So everything, one thing led to another, and following discussions with the council and the commissioners, it was decided then that we could no longer Band-Aid the issue and we were going to have to look at a way to proceed, whether that be, it never really was talked about renovating as such because there are so many multiple things. The concrete around the pool, all these to be replaced, every feature of the pool. I mean, the water slide is old. I mean, it's, it's far surpassed its time. They don't, there's a lot of things in the pool that's not handicap accessible, so once you start fixing this and that, then you begin to get to where you have to have codes. You have to meet the codes. You can no longer fall into the grandfather clauses that we are. You can't have a separate baby pool operating the way it was. You have to start doing different filtrations. So it was just a decision at that time that we were probably looking at a lot more money to renovate and fix than to start over. So that's when we brought in context design, met with them, met with Spear Corporation also, who we've dealt with for years, and they've done some major drain repairs for us. So they knew the makeup of the pool and where the drains were, and it was their professional opinion that it would be in the best interest of the county to look at some new move. You're welcome.
If nothing else, I want to entertain a motion. Go ahead. Okay.
Well, I would just like to say shortly that I am opposed to taxing one small sector of our economy in the county. And a lot of my friends have bars and restaurants in this county, and I'm opposed to that. On the other side of the coin, somehow, we get, because of that opinion, we're construed as being against the pool. I am not against the pool. Go wherever you want, whatever you can afford. I, and I think I heard mentioned looking at different avenues, but I am strongly opposed to taxing just that one small group.
Yeah, I feel like you've gotten off track here with everybody trying to speak for a pool. And nobody is disagreeing with people for pools. Sorry that it shut down, sorry that it didn't get maintained all the time. What the issue is before you write down is the food and beverage tax. That's the issue that you're voting on. What you folks need to do is figure out is if you table it, can you bring it back up in future meetings down the road before this 2024 Brian Maron, 2024 ready grant expires? That's what I don't know. I don't know what the qualifications are with what the state's. And I'm not sure if you folks do either. So that's where the issue is right now. Nobody, I believe 100%, everybody wants a pool in this community. There's without doubt in my mind. And to answer Tony's, Tony's point of statement, my house is 70 years old and I maintain it. A pool could last, it's got to be maintained. Thank you.
I think you're up here wants a pool. Or not against a pool, there he is.
Trying to figure out what you're doing.
Trying to figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah. And if you remember David Frye did write articles and newsletters to you folks about a community partnership with corporations and public funding. This community does come through on things like this. There's a way to do it without a food and beverage tax.
I don't think there's, I'm not going to speak for my fellow council members up here, but I think I, my feeling is that they're all in the same situation. We're not against the pool. I don't know where that comes from, or why people think we are, because I got a lot of emails too saying, we need a pool. When we know we need a pool, we're not discussing that. We're discussing how we're going to pay for it, how much money we're going to spend. That's the issue at any end.
That's correct.
That's what we got to try to address. But we're not, in my opinion, we're not far enough along in the process to know what that's going to be, what kind of pool we're going to build, and how much money we're going to spend. So as far as the food and beverage tax, I don't know if we, if we table it, I guess, you know, we could decide at December's meeting, you know, if we find out what happens if we table it. Maybe I did wrong. I'm not trying to throw you under the bus here, but I know we had a discussion earlier.
I think, I think we have to untable it.
I'm sure we have to untable it, but I don't know.
Not so on the insult.
As long as it doesn't die.
I don't think it dies. I think, am I right, Jan? If we table it, it doesn't die, does it?
It can, you really, in my opinion.
How much time you got?
I think you need to say if we're going to table it to this meeting or a specific meeting.
Isn't that considered postponing instead of tabling? Postpone it to a certain date.
For three months.
I would say January.
My opinion is it should be, until they've got all the members put together to know exactly what's going on. I don't think we need to bring it back up to about March, February, March, and do this again.
I agree.
Yes. Have a six o'clock evening meeting.
I appreciate the fact that you had a meeting. Thank you for that, Patty.
Pardon?
I appreciate the fact that you suggested a six o'clock meeting. Thank you for holding this evening. Well done.
I'm not opposed to holding a TV meeting, I just, on this, we're, you know, it's a pretty big discussion we got to have on, on putting another tax on. So like I said before, the problem I've got with it, I know it's only pennies, but the problem I've got with it is what hardship it puts on restaurants collecting it, what's it going to cost them to collect money for us? This is where my biggest problem is, a lot of it. And nobody's got any numbers yet. You know, us, you know, I'm willing to go to February or March before we ever bring it back out.
I think you're right, postpone it. Postpone different, whatever, to March. You really have the answers you need to make an informed decision. Right now, we don't have enough information to make an informed decision.
There are two considerations when you say March. There are two things that you're definitely passing by if you say March. And I'm not saying that's not the right number, but I think we need to think about what month we do it in. First of all, I know a lot of you don't believe it, that we have been told by the state that our community will have possibly three times our population here in April for the eclipse. So if we think we're going to pass the food and beverage, we are missing out on those dollars, but that's not the most important part. We also were told, should we get this in, in process and started for the building process by the end of this year, very first of next year, we can shoot to have this pool open by May of '25. So if we push it back to March, the likelihood is we're pushing back opening a pool at least another year. So those are the only two things I would say.
We'll do it in February, make a decision in February. Look at it.
When are the bids going to be? Where are they going?
Right now, I was talking earlier, so I don't know how we can.
It's a new point until the bids come.
Till we figure out what we're going to build and how we're going to do it, or rebuild what we got, or what. Right now, I mean, the pool committee, the Parks Department's worked very hard to this point, but we still don't have anything to go on there. So, I don't, I don't know, I just feel like we're all waiting.
Well, I, I feel that our decision's written wrong. I don't want, I think it should include more than the pool and the paragraphs. If we're going to have a food and beverage tax, it has to do something for the restaurants and the taverns. I mean, it's nuts. You've got to do something for them. So I think the whole work is, if we're going to do it, it needs to be rewritten and reapproved. That's my opinion.
Okay. My opinion is.
Question, when, if you adopt the tax, when does it go into effect? Is that immediately or two months or?
The document said January 1st. It, it'll actually take the Department of Revenue. I think we estimated about two months for it to run above. Essentially, it doesn't have to be a calendar, start of the calendar year, it can start in mid-year or whenever it's approved.
Okay. Will we adopt other taxes sometimes? Adopt it in October, then start in January, that's why.
Yeah, you have to, I think we were told two months for the Department of Revenue to get it.
If it's rewritten, it would be two years before you can take it to the state again. Because that has to be approved by the state. And they approved that we could bring it to the council to, for Decatur County.
Okay, I've only got one other comment. When all that stuff comes in, I'd like for the Parks Department to have an open house and show everybody what's going on. Is that okay? Use this room, put your pictures up wherever you want to, things like that. Now, this council's going to have to make a decision. I mean, we've got to go one idea.
Would you be able to, wait, I'm sorry. Would you be able to set a vote for, say, January, February, and then if it isn't to your satisfaction at that time, post vote again to another? I mean, that way would.
Well, I'm going to go to February.
I would like to see some questions answered before we table it, because I wouldn't want to table it tonight and then we're down, because I don't know if that's exactly what we want to do if the playground is involved in. I would like to see us, is Baker Jilly the one handling the logistics on that?
For, for the playgrounds? Oh, no.
For the ordinance?
For the ordinance, of course, and for the legal side, and then for the financial side, though, as far as the blocking estimates and such as far as Baker Jilly.
Well, I would like to know if, what the stipulations are on that based on our actions. So if we're going to table it, what's it take to untable it, and how long do we have to do that?
I, I think you could always postpone a vote in January.
I would postpone instead of table.
Mark, you got it.
Been doing a little research.
Okay.
Get right in there, buddy. If you postpone the vote, you can bring it up at any time. If you table the vote tonight, it takes a majority of your board to bring it back to a vote. So they have to agree, four members would have to agree to bring it back to a vote at any point down the road.
Do we have to designate a month if we postpone?
No.
If we table it, do we have to designate?
If you table it, it cannot be brought back up unless four of you, a motion is made a second, and four people vote to, to put it.
But is that at any time, though?
At any time.
Okay. So timeframe is one question, is how we end up.
So then it has to be voted on as written as the original one, it can't be changed, because then they're asking for a creative change.
They have to do that. We have no control over that.
And I would just ask to commit, to ask you to commit if it is, if you do extend a plan to, to vote on it, to give the advertising, create the advertising prior to the meeting so, so these votes know that, you know, and you guys would never do that, but to make sure they know at what meeting it's going to be.
And we looked into that, and W T R E, I believe, does put our agendas on their website.
So the way I understand this, there's not going to be any effort paid to find better funding? There's not going to be any effort paid to try to rewrite the ordinance to make worse things?
You can't rewrite the ordinance because it's legislators added that party. We can't. We'd have to go back to them. We could look for another funding.
Well, that's where, I don't know why this was brought to the council report, wrote down in the ordinance. I think the council should have something to do, how's the ordinance was brought up? That's what my biggest problem with is. I don't, I don't like them seeing our ways we can spend it if we put it on.
Well, let's, let's make a decision here.
I'm going to make a motion that we just suspend the vote for now, run the table it. I'd like to suspend it till we get more information.
You want to postpone it?
Postpone it.
I'm sorry. Postpone it?
Yeah.
Do you want to set a date, or you just want to bring it up again and postpone it?
We need to, yeah, we need to set a date.
I think it should be February.
I was going to say, I would make a motion that we postpone it till February, give the Parks Department a chance to get something put together and figure out kind of what we're going to be. And then, when is the new purpose?
April. I'd almost suggest January, I know we could postpone some more, we have two.
Okay, so I'll change my motion to January.
I'll second that motion.
Bill seconds. Kay made a motion, Bill seconded.
I got discussion.
Any discussion?
I think if you do that, we're going to be in the same boat we're in right now. I think we should table the thing, and if you can get four councilmen interested in talking about it, give, you can get something done, but why, why keep putting it off, putting it off, putting it off? Let's table the thing, if you can get some numbers together, make some sense out of all this, surely four of us will vote right off the table with the law. That's why you're going to go to January, you're going to postpone again, you're going to go to February, postpone again. So until you get some council people convinced of how they should be done, I think we're just wasting our time.
I disagree.
Well, we've got a motion in a second. Okay, Jan, we're going to have a roll call for, for.
For what?
It's going to be for a postponement till January. So we have all the numbers in, well, we are January meeting. I'll try to have it here, I'll make sure Jan, we get set up.
Six p.m. here.
Six, six p.m. here.
Gary.
In January.
Okay, are you ready?
Yep.
Deanna.
Yes.
Ernie.
May.
Ernie?
May.
Kenny?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Danny?
This is unofficial, I'm a name.
Do the eights have it, five to two?
Okay. It's postponed to January meeting here at 6:00. One more time.
I'm trying to make sure that Jan says it was on the W T R E website on your janet. Legally, you have to give the local newspaper that serves the community that's a Greensburg Daily News, and that should have been done at your very first meeting, depending which newspaper or public one. And number two, I just want to say, we are collecting, if we are going to collect tax for food and beverage, including viewpoint St. Paul and Westport restaurants collecting that food and beverage tax, what are we doing for those communities as well? I understand that they come here and come to the pool, so I'm not arguing the pool, but what are you doing to enhance those communities as well? Thanks for your time, I really appreciate it.
Now that we've addressed that situation, I would like to charge this council with taking a hard look at how we're going to fund a project and how much money we think we can lay on the table without having to do the food and beverage tax to work on the pool. Between now and maybe January. I think we can. We'll see what we have available, what we can put out there and see what we can get done with that amount of money.
Is there any grants out there, five more or is he in that?
We've got three million in that one.
Ms. Bill?
Would there be a possibility of looking into an inkeeper's tax, county inkeeper's tax? We have so many people coming from.
We've got, we have.
But I mean an additional to fund this.
I think it's as high as it can be.
Because that would be outside dollars coming into the county.
Okay, Rosie?
Just remember, this is a county food and beverage tax of 1%. There's nothing stated anywhere that says the city cannot implement another food and beverage tax. Remember that also. Thank you.
Okay, we've had a motion and vote. Anybody else on the council going in for us? Okay, December meeting will be normal, 9:00. On Thursday at the courthouse. I asked Jan to put lunch and officers on the agenda. So we can do that, so we can start out in January fresh.